The Kerrville City Council is in session for the purpose of this workshop. And I'm going to turn this over initially to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So today we have, it's not our initial discussion because we had a workshop, kind of an extraordinary, or not the usual thing that we would do, but an early workshop back in March, as you recall, and just to kind of put some big, big issues on the table for you all to discuss and give us some guidance on. But typically, our first budget workshop occurs now, here in the middle of June, and we typically focus on the general fund. This is not by any means set in stone. In fact, Amy will tell you in a minute that we're actually out of balance right now. We haven't balanced the budget, but we will by the time it comes to you officially before the end of July. And then you'll talk about the proposed budget. We'll present it all at your first meeting in August, and Amy will go over that calendar. But today is really just the discussion of the budget issues, not a proposed budget, because as I said, it's still being drafted. And we want your feedback and input, guidance and direction on some of the major policy items that we're looking at. Now, I'll tell you, this is the most austere budget that I have been developing with the staff since the recession.
Since when?
The recession. Back in another city, I was cutting like $7 million out of a budget. Ours isn't that big. Thankfully, we don't have to cut that much, but it's going to be a smaller budget than last fiscal year. And so, again, we're trying to balance. So there's not a lot, there's not a lot of new things. In fact, there's not any new things. Our goal with this budget is to avoid furloughs and layoffs, but that means there's not going to be much left for anything else. And you'll hear from Amy in a minute more about how all that works. So, again, we'll have another workshop in July. That workshop will talk about all the other funds, you know, the water fund, the debt service fund, the hotel tax fund, the golf fund, and so forth. And the last slide that you'll see today gives you kind of a little sneak peek about some of the major issues with those funds. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Amy to kind of hit the highlights, and then you'll see as we go through this, because it is a workshop environment, that we'll be asking you questions for your feedback and your comments as we pause along the way through the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amy now.
Okay. Ms. Dozier?
Morning.
Morning.
All right. Well, get started here. And as Mark alluded to, we talked a little bit about the calendar already. We'll go into a few more specifics about that, then go into just a budget overview, and then some of these major issues that you'll see listed here on this agenda page. I want to start with the calendar. So you should have a handout at your seat that looks something like this. So this is more detailed, the handout's more detailed than what you see on this slide. But just to show you kind of where we are in the process, we are at this June budget workshop. We are going to focus on the general fund. And just as Mark described, you know, this is a work in process. We really do not finalize the budget as far as having it balanced and having an official proposal to y'all until July 31st. One of the main reasons why we can't give you a proposed budget until then is because our certified property tax roll is not available until July 24th this year. It's usually the 25th, but that's on a weekend, so it's the 24th is when we're supposed to get it this year. So anyway, quickly after that, though, we'll have a proposed budget, official proposed budget to you. It'll be balanced. It's not balanced currently. And then moving into August, that's when we'll give you the official presentation of the proposed budget. Council will then vote to a resolution to set a proposed tax rate. And then the last meeting in August and first meeting in September will be two different votes on both the budget and the tax rate. So there's, and it's an ordinance, so there's a vote in both of those meetings on both of those issues. So the idea is we wrap up by September 8th, and then the new fiscal year begins on October 1st. All right. So this is where we are right now on the general fund, $343,000 shortfall there. So that's what we have to make up in the next few weeks, and we want to get some of your opinions on our assumptions, the things we've included, not included, that kind of thing, to help us get to where we need to be. Just as a reminder, on the general fund, our revenue sources are over on the left side of this graph, and the major sources are property tax and sales tax. So those are the two that we'll be spending the most time on today. And then on the expenditure side, the big expenditure is personnel. And then we have other expenditures for supplies, services, maintenance, that kind of thing. But personnel is 71% of the budget. So we're going to start with talking about property tax. I wanted to just start with a reminder on this slide. So this is a pie graph that shows how, what happens when you pay your property tax. I think sometimes people forget about where your property tax goes, and it's not all to the city. Only a portion of it goes to the city. So you can see here, this is based on the 2019 tax rates, but 52% of the property tax that our citizens pay goes to KISD. And then another 23% to the county, 24% to the city, so about equally split there, and then a little bit to UGRA and Headwaters. And just as a reminder of how this process works, so we have the Kerr Central Appraisal District, their independent body made up of certified appraisers, and they do the property tax appraisals. And by state law, those appraisals are as of January 1st. And so that's, you know, that definitely creates a unique situation this year, given what's happened since January 1st, and it was really kind of a different world back then, but they're evaluating as of January 1st. That same appraisal is used for all of these taxing jurisdictions. It's not just the city that uses that appraisal. Everyone uses the same one. And KCAD, they are audited by the comptroller every two years to make sure that, we've talked about this before, but just to make sure that their appraisals really do represent fair market value. They did get audited in 2019, and they did have failures, audit failures in several categories, meaning that what they were coming up with as fair market value was more than 5% different than what the comptroller came up with as fair market value. And this whole process relates to school district funding, and school district funding in the state, and how much local property taxes are used to fund schools versus how much the state sends to fund schools. So it's kind of all wrapped up in that, but the city ends up kind of in the mix as well because we get a portion of the property taxes. But that whole appraisal and audit process is related to school district funding. And if, if the appraisal district doesn't get their appraisals back up in line with what the comptroller says the actual fair market value is, then the school district state funding is at risk there, so. And by the way, I just got this information from Sharon, the chief appraiser, this morning. I was asking her about, about protests and, you know, what they're seeing this year. And not surprisingly, they have a significant number of protests this year. An average year, they usually get about 1100 to 1200 protests. This year, they're expected to hit 4,000, so significantly more than usual. And that also creates, you know, in addition to the issue of trying to do all these property tax protest hearings and maintain social distancing, you know, that's in the mix. And then the sheer just volume that they're receiving, they're concerned that they're not going to get through all of these protests by the time that they need to give us a certified roll. And in that case, they will give us an estimated roll. Usually, their certified rolls, they can say that 95% of the values are certified, and 95% of the protests have already been handled and decided, that kind of thing. This year, they don't know that if they're going to be able to get to that 95%. Unfortunately, that doesn't change any of our deadlines of when we need to vote on things, and when our fiscal year starts, and all of that. So it's likely that we're going to get an estimated roll that may be more subject to change than what the rolls usually are.
Ms. Dozier, let me ask you this. I mean, this is fairly simple, but given the escalation in prices of housing here, for instance, and it's continuing to go up significantly. So the comptroller is saying your values are under fair market value, so you've got to raise your appraisals. And that is, creates a lot of headaches.
Yeah, that's correct, and that is what's happening. And I talked to the chief appraiser about, you know, what do you think is creating that difference, and why do you think their numbers are, the comptroller's numbers are higher than what the appraisal district had, that kind of thing. And she's telling me, and I don't know exactly where all the sources of this information are, but that the comptroller was able to get more just actual information on property sales than the appraisal district was able to get. It's a, you know, voluntary thing. If you have a property transaction and you want to report it to the appraisal district right now, you can, but you don't have to. So she's telling me that the comptroller was able to get more actual sales data, and that that's what they were basing their number on compared to the estimates.
Did she say how they received that additional information?
No, that's the part I don't, yeah, that's the part I don't know.
Through Texas A&amp;M. Do what?
The Real Estate Center, possibly.
How are they getting sales data? Through the MLS systems? So then they're getting it through the Texas Rural State Center, you think?
I'm guessing, since that's public, right? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that part either.
That's concerning.
But that's what she was telling me. She thought the main difference was between what the comptroller was looking at and what they were looking at.
Yeah, that's concerning because Texas is still a non-reporting state.
So when you're protesting your, your actual estimate of property value, can you get that information? I wonder when, I mean, we're in line to protest or to have a hearing. So I wonder when you're personally, before the KCAD, if you can ask, you know, can you show me the information that was used to warrant this increase? That's what I would do.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And hopefully they'll have it.
I don't know the process for sure. If anyone else has anything to add on that.
Well, you can hire someone to, to help you come up with comps, a realtor, a licensed realtor, and that's one way that an individual can get information. But as Gary said, Texas is a non-disclosure state, and so that information is not supposed to be public, not supposed to be out there.
Nothing we can do about it, but it's still concerning.
How they would get it, I would be interested, too.
I can follow up with her and see if she has more information on how, you know, how she heard that from the state, but that was her understanding from the comptroller when they received their audit on those particular categories that were more than 5% different than the way KCAD had valued them. That was her understanding of why.
Okay, I've got one more question.
Yes.
And this is, this is speculation, but given how property sales are going, or it seems to be going, in Kerrville, Kerr County, could the comptroller come back next year and say, you've got to bump it up more?
Well, I know that it's an every-two-year process, so they're not supposed to be audited for the 20 values, since they were audited for the 2019 values. My understanding is there's actually, like, even the every-two-year process, some years are more detailed than other years as far as how much they look at. But 2019 was an audit year, so 2020 is not supposed to be an audit year. All right. Well, this is a slide that y'all have seen before, and this is just showing that, so on the preliminary roll that we received from KCAD, property values are up, you know, over 10%, so significant increases there.
So far.
Yes. And then this is a slide that shows property tax revenue and property tax rates. So, you know, this, this is where we get into increasing values. So you can see that the bars on the bottom there, our property tax revenue has gone up each year. This is through fiscal year 20. And then the chart over to the right there shows our property tax rate. And you'll see the years highlighted in yellow, and those are years that city council reduced the property tax rate. That first column that says rate, that's the total property tax rate. The column labeled M and O stands for maintenance and operation, and that's the portion of the property tax rate that goes to the general fund, just for our operations. And the column labeled INS stands for interest and sinking, and that's the portion of our property tax rate that goes to our debt service fund to pay debt supported by property taxes. So you can see that, you know, twice in the last three years, the property tax rate has been lowered. The property tax revenue is continuing to go up. Some of that is because of increased valuations, and then some of it is also from new property. So, you know, we've obviously had a lot of growth and new building, and that's new property added to the roll that would increase the revenue as well. So historically, like we talked about before, 34% of general fund revenue comes from property tax. Our current projection for 2020 is 9.8 million in revenue in the general fund. Looks like we're on track to make that. And in '21, right now, what we're assuming is 10.1 million in revenue. So that's a $300,000 increase from our current year. About half of that, just, this is just our assumption, so this, you know, this is what we'll want your input in. But about half of it relates to new value. So, you know, we have a new hobby lobby. We have, you know, definitely new value on the rolls. And then about half of it, right now, I'm assuming a 1.5% increase on the existing value. But you'll note that in order to achieve that, the property tax rate must be lowered.
The assumption of the 1.5 increase for value, can you tell me a little bit more? Can you give me a little more detail?
Yeah, and this is where we're really looking for y'all's input. So we wanted to, to put something in there that certainly was not in line with, you know, the 10% increase in appraised value, because, well, for many reasons. But, but first of all, like, if we just left that property tax rate alone at 54 cents, and then property values went up 10%, our revenue would be up 10% plus new value. You know, that's not reasonable. Also, that would trigger an election. Voters would have to approve that. Right now, state law says that you can increase property taxes up to 3.5%. And then if it's above that, that would have to be voter-approved. So certainly, we didn't want to leave it at that. I wanted to take it down significantly from, from that, especially just, you know, given the economic climate, that kind of thing. So I thought that 1.5% would be a reasonable amount, but we're certainly looking for input from council on that. And all of this is such a, you know, the timing is just difficult. So we're having to kind of guess based on that preliminary roll without really knowing how values are going to change between now and July 24th. And so, yeah, now this gets to the time.
Or even, or even after July 24th.
Yes, that's true as well, especially this year, yes. But yeah, we're interested in hearing your input on, on the tax rate and anything else that you might want to give your input on related to property tax assumptions or valuations, anything like that.
On the property tax assumptions, you've talked about that already. And I know that you don't have a fiscal ball, but based on what we get in July, knowing that we really won't have the best picture of the final certified tax roll, are we going to conservatively budget below what we get in July, and how would that look?
Yeah, I think this year, we are going to have to take that into account much more than we usually do. I'm interested to see how these protest hearings go, the ones that they get through. You know, are we seeing values being lowered during these hearings or not? And hopefully, that'll give us a sense.
You'll have that breakout. You'll have that detail.
Right. That should help with knowing, okay, if they have, you know, 10% of the hearings still left, what might we be looking at in terms of adjustments? And that'll just be kind of an average, but maybe at least a little bit more information. The other thing that we bake into the budget is we get this certified roll that says, you know, this is the taxable value. They adjust for the frozen value, all the exemptions, all that kind of stuff, times your tax rate. This is the levy. But we don't budget that levy because we know that we don't collect 100% of property taxes. And so, I mean, we're lucky to live in a community where we do have very strong collections, but we usually budget it at like 98%, which is still really good. But depending on economic factors, that's something that we're going to have to consider as well of, you know, does it look like we might be in line for more defaults or delinquent taxes than we've had in previous years if we have high unemployment or, you know, changes in our local economy that could impact people's ability to pay? So certainly, we don't want to be aggressive in assuming, you know, there won't be any changes, or we'll collect 100%. We need to back off from that number some, so.
So just trying to get my head wrapped around it. So go back to that previous slide. Do you mind?
Sure.
So the 10% is not going to hold. It'll be something less than that.
Oh, no, no, I know that.
And, and as Amy said, what we'll end up doing is definitely coming to you with a lower tax rate. And then we're probably going to decrease the collection rate to something, you know, 95 or 90s, something, maybe less.
Decrease the what?
The collection rate. Because we don't know what will happen in terms of, once these protests are, if it's, if truly it's a significant number of estimated, we don't know where they're going to land. And so that, what they'll do is they'll issue a supplemental roll later on, which will take your, your levy down. But then we've already set a budget, right? So what we'll do then is probably adjust the collection rate, assuming that, that the protests will bring it down further, even after the certified roll. And so it's just a matter of what we see in the next month in terms of those protests and any trends, and then what's left over, and then trying to do the best we can and err on the conservative side so that we're not left with a big hole in the budget after it's adopted.
Yeah, but certainly, at this point, we're not seeing a scenario where we would leave, you know, where we would be recommending leaving the property tax rate at 54 cents because that's, that just doesn't look like it's going to work with the valuations.
Have you gotten anything back from the appraisal district?
I was going to ask.
Preliminary, anything as far as what they're, what they're able to tell you at this point?
I've gotten just, I guess, a couple of things. I've gotten information on how many protests they have, and, and I've gotten information saying that they are concerned that they will not be able to 95% certify. And then I can ask them for updated rolls, and I've done that multiple times. One thing that's particularly hard with our jurisdiction is our frozen property. So I can't just look at a taxable value and then multiply it out times a tax rate and say, this is what it would be, because every change in the tax rate, they have to go through that frozen property, property by property, and see what their ceiling is, and if they're maxed out or not maxed out. And so it's, it's just a systematic report from the appraisal district to figure out what the changes in rates actually would, you know, would mean.
And it's probably premature for them to say, you know, well, they can't because of the public, so they couldn't say, we're, we are lowering taxes. She hasn't given us any indication.
No, yeah, no, I haven't gotten any information.
That's too soon for that, yeah.
And yeah, and as far, my understanding is they are just getting started on some of these.
I wonder if they've done any yet.
So yeah, I don't even know if they finalized any of them yet, but.
So we know the rate will go down. It's just, what is that magic number? And I know we've, we've manipulated some numbers around to see, but some of these are guesses. Like you said, the collection would probably be a little lower than before. So I guess it's just a matter of, I guess, the pulse of just keeping in touch with KCAD.
Yes, yeah, we'll definitely continue to do that because, yeah, if there, if there are significant changes, hopefully at least we can kind of be racing for that if we, you know, get updated rolls along the way. But for sure, between the first estimated roll that they're required to send out at the end of April and the end of July, it's very common to see significant changes in value. And that's, you know, in years where there's 1,200 protests. And so in a year where there's 4,000 protests.
And I wonder, when you have that many, if you were to go to 5% difference, let's say, are they less likely to do that because there are so many and, you know, and being consistent, whether in years where we've had 1,200, that wouldn't have made such an impact. But in this case, with that many protests.
I think it would have made the same.
There's just no way of knowing.
No, it's just a guess at this point.
They're also going to be cognizant of what the comptroller did in terms of the audit. So it, it's just no way to know.
Right.
Right, and certainly, they don't want to jeopardize the school district's funding from the state.
Right.
Well, and asking, asking for comments, I would say, you know, obviously, we've got to bring the tax rate down. I think council, or at least this councilman is going to support that, you know, to what extent. Good luck figuring that out.
Yeah.
I don't envy that position. Again, particularly, I know for accountants and engineers, assumptions aren't very good. They don't like that, so it's such a challenge. I, you know, I do want to congratulate Mark and the rest of the staff, Amy, of taking this very conservative approach. And I know there's no way to calculate it, but I think you are building in good assumptions to handle a kind of, not a worst-case scenario, but a bad-case scenario possibly. You know, I hope six months from now, we're sitting there thinking, man, I'm so glad we're conservative because now we're looking good, and we can kind of readdress, you know, some different budget allocations next year possibly. But I think we have to go into it. On the conservative side, we don't really have a choice. And, you know, I know that's tough on staff, but it's tough on the citizens, too, having to pay these taxes and these increased valuations, so, yeah.
That's good feedback, and certainly, that is the approach that we've been taking. You know, we'd much rather have a, you know, maybe we do have a good news story, and then we can figure out what, you know, what we can do with that, with that money if it happens that it comes in higher. But there's so much uncertainty this year that.
I was also curious, because your last item there is longer-term impacts, and help me with that. What are we looking at in the long term?
Yeah, one of the things that we're thinking about, too, is we're looking at, what do we think property valuations are going to do next year? So, you know, properties are going to be valued again January 1st, 2021. Is, you know, are we going to be in a recession at that point, and our property value is going to be lower? That's a possibility. And if they are lower, and we have a lower tax rate to start with, you know, what does that mean in terms of where we're putting the city the longer term, you know, going forward? So, yeah, just something to consider, and, you know, I don't know what real estate values are going to do. It doesn't sound like they've taken a downturn at this point. But, you know, it just kind of depends how long this goes on, how long unemployment stays high, what, how long the virus stays active, that kind of thing, so.
Well, and some of, you know, our buyers are here, but it's really too soon, I think, for us to really know where these valuations are, how they're going to hold up, and in the market. As, you know, they say that it's bringing them up to market value, and does that mean a homeowner is going to get a little bit more than this? Or is that new valuation going to be, actually going to be the market value?
Yeah, but once again, it's a whole lot easier if the valuation's coming on to go back in and pump some line items than it is at that point, try to cut line items. I think you have to have them cut in advance with the hope.
You can have them later if you have to, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think our commercial. Yeah, I think our commercial values are even more volatile. What we're seeing with businesses, if it's income-based appraisals, you know, we're seeing all, think about our hotel properties, they're all going down.
Yeah, I, I want to echo what Councilman Cochran said in terms of a conservative approach. Then we get into fall and see maybe a better picture where we are. And I just think that's wise. One observation I will make that not, not much we can do about, but as our housing values continue to increase, you've got a whole bunch of folks down here at the lower end in terms of income, they just don't have an option for housing. I mean, yeah, there's apartments that can be fine, rental, but any hope of a purchase, it looks like it's more and more remote. And to me, that's why we need to continue to look at workforce housing. What can we do to make that less bad?
Well, and the other, the other aspect of that, Mayor, is landlords are raising, are going to be raising their rates because their values have gone up, their taxes have gone up. And so it just becomes a, it's a vicious circle.
And that's a good point, too, that, you know, there is a little bit of relief with the homestead cap where your property value can't go up more than 10% in a single year. And we've talked about some of how that calculation works, but that's only on your homestead. So if you're renting and that landlord doesn't live in that property, there's no homestead cap on that property.
And, and they, they're going to, they need the money from someplace, so.
Again, I think in that same term, because Mark was talking about commercial properties and rental properties, I've talked to numerous people that have seen 40% to 60% increases in their property value last year and their appraised value. So it's not, we talked about 10%, that was kind of what the average was in residential. But we've seen 40% to 60% increases on a lot of those properties.
Yeah, and the, and the commercial is really unique because those might be the ones that are most impacted by COVID. And, yeah, they have the highest increases, so. Well, thanks for your input on that, that's helpful.
Thank you for the report.
All right.
Ms. Dozier.
Yes.
We are counting on you to solve all the problems we've raised.
Bring us a report back.
I will, I will. All right, moving on to sales tax. So sales tax is our second-largest source of revenue in the general fund historically, 26% of general fund revenue. We have a revised 2020 projection. I'll go into more detail on 2020 sales tax in your next council meeting. But we've recently revised our 2020 projection upward sum to 7.2 million, still short of budget, but better than we were thinking that it might be. Right now, what we have in the 2021 budget is 6.7 million, and that's 10% less than the 2020 budget. It would take us down to like a level that we saw in 2017. This is something that we really are trying to get as much current information on as we can before we commit to an assumption here. So so far, our sales tax during the COVID time has come in better than what we, our original projections thought. So we hope that's going to continue to be the case. We are concerned about, you know, if unemployment remains in double digits, at what point is that going to really start impacting sales tax? We're also concerned about federal stimulus money, they're the, you know, just the checks to individual taxpayers or the extra unemployment that, you know, once that money runs out, where does that put us in terms of sales tax? So we feel like a 10% decrease is a fairly conservative number. If we were to change that by just 1%, that would add another 75,000 in revenue. So if we said a 9% increase instead of a 10% increase, that would give us 75,000 more in revenue for the budget.
And I think it's, I think it's important, just to be clear, 10% is kind of arbitrary.
It is, it is.
We don't have anything to base that on, other than just, we think that's a good conservative number.
We think that's a good conservative number. We, you know, in the recession, the previous recession that we had, we were down 8% for the year compared to the prior year. So we've kind of used that as a starting place during that recession. We didn't have this level of business closures and that kind of thing. So we took it down a little bit more than that. We're certainly looking at what other cities are doing and what different economists are projecting. But you're right, it's, it's kind of a placeholder at this point of, yeah, it, you know, could be this.
On the last slide, you said July actual, so that means September will have the July actual information?
Well, I actually meant what we receive in July. That's because we'll need to set the budget, you know, we'll need to have a proposed budget to you at the end of July, July 31st. So we'll have one more month of sales tax that we receive. And so that'll be July sales tax that is for May sales, that represents May sales. We'll at least have that one more data point before we have to finalize what our sales tax assumption in the budget is going to be.
You say finalize, so there will, you, you, you're saying in July, that's going to be our.
That's going to be what our proposed budget is. Council can certainly change that budget in August, but we have to submit a proposed budget to you at the end of July. We're going to submit a balanced budget to you at the end of July. And so we'll finalize what sales tax assumption we're using in that proposed budget after we receive that actual payment in July for what the represents May sales.
In between then and the final budget approval, we'll have one or two more data points and council.
We'll have one more data point. We'll have a data point in August. It gets kind of tricky with the timing of when we have to publish notices and have hearings and that kind of thing. But there is a little bit of time in there if we, you know, if it just looks significantly better or significantly worse, that we could make some adjustments in those line items, so.
Amy, what, I know we had projected, you had projected a little bit lower initially. What were some of the surprises that, that caused it to be a little bit higher than we had expected? Anything in particular?
Well, I guess we're still waiting on the sales tax detail by taxpayer for the month of June. So we know that our June sales tax that represents April sales was actually up compared to our budget and compared to June of 2019. It was better than both of those numbers, and we were very surprised about that. And we know that it's not because of, of an audit payment or out-of-period payment or some kind of unusual activity like that. But what we don't know yet is, you know, did we just see across-the-board increases in multiple retailers? Is it because of internet sales? Is it because of construction? We don't know those things yet. We have to, every month after the summary data is released by the comptroller, we have to submit an open records request to the comptroller and ask them for that detail. So we've done that, but they have 10 days to give us that information. So I'm hoping by next week, we'll have that and we'll have some better information. When we were looking at the sales tax that we got in May that represented March sales, and so we had partial closures in March, during that timeframe, we certainly saw increases in our home improvement stores and some of the big box stores and internet sales. We, we saw increases there, and then we saw decreases for sure in food services. And, but luckily, they were more than offset by those other large retailers. So at this point though, I don't know if there's something unusual with a single taxpayer or if it's across the board, that kind of thing. So once we see that, it should help us to know, you know, if we just saw one really unusual payment from a single taxpayer, that they had some just really unusual sale and a large amount of sales tax generated from it, then certainly we wouldn't want to project that going forward.
Right.
But if we see across-the-board increases, then we'd be more comfortable in raising those assumptions a little. You can see from this graph, sales tax is volatile. That line up at the top, the up and down, up and down, shows that sales tax is volatile. And it's certainly not something that we want to just be holding our breath on every single month and not knowing if we're going to, you know, make budget or not because of what might happen with sales tax, so. This is something that I'll get into in more detail at your next meeting, but this just shows some month-by-month projections. And it's looking like that for the, our revised projections are for this April-through-September timeframe, the COVID timeframe in this fiscal year. We're looking at being down in the 8% kind of range. That's not going to put us down 8% for the year because things were going along just fine until, you know, we hit April, so. Anyway, but more to come on that in your next council meeting. Any comments, though, on sales tax and on these assumptions?
I'm curious to know, I mean, I've talked to so many people who did home improvement projects and gardening, and I wouldn't be surprised if that, that is what's kind of held up, those numbers going forward. Now, you're right, when stimulus checks run out and things start to, the dust settles, I'd be curious to see how, and restaurants decide if they can go forward or not. You know, there'll be some changes, I hope not many. But that's what I've heard in my going on, you know, my neighborhood and my crowd of people is there's been a lot of spending in spite of, it was just different spending. So we'll see, I'm curious.
And all of our hotels, motels are open now?
I don't know if the end of the hills is open yet.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, the hills is.
I thought it was maybe still.
The YO is open.
Is open, but I think the YO stayed open throughout, I believe. They didn't, they did, actually closed in there.
Right.
Okay.
How do you, how do you project the 5B sales tax income?
The EIC?
Yeah.
Sales tax? We try to use the same assumptions as what we're using for the general fund. One thing that can be a little bit hard there, and if you'll, you know, you could see the sum in the 20 budget, is the EIC budget ends up getting set a little bit before the general fund budget gets set. And so if we get some late sales tax information that, you know, makes us say, oh, we can tweak this assumption some, we'll have time to do that in the general fund. But the EIC budget has already been voted on and approved by the EIC members, so it can be a little bit different. But, but generally, the idea is we use the exact same methodology. And we just get, you know, one lump sum amount from the comptroller and 2/3 of it goes to the general fund and 1/3 of it goes to EIC. So it's not, there's no different rate or calculation or anything like that. It's just the percentage that goes to EIC versus general fund. All right. Moving on to streets. Currently in our budget, we have 1.8 million included for streets maintenance. We'd like that to be even higher, but it's very difficult in this lean year. We do have it at least up from 1.75 million in the 20 budget. A big portion of what allows us to do that is a street use fee that the water fund pays, and it's 4% of their revenue, so that's budgeted at 525,000. And then we have some other potential sources that we don't have any of these plugged into the 21 budget. They're more just for council to consider a little bit about, you know, moving forward and potentially in future years, would we want to look at something like a non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchise fee, a street use fee or anything in the property tax rate that we specifically, you know, want to say, okay, we're changing the property tax rate with the intention that this much more could go to streets because of that.
Amy, on the 4%, 4% street use fee, when was that implemented?
It's, it's, it was implemented, what, three years ago? We started off at 3% and then we raised it to 4%.
Okay.
So 4% started in 2020, and then it's.
And that's where the difference between 1.7 and the 1.5 comes from?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not entirely, we just knew that we wanted to try to continually increase it. But it, it was at 4%.
Last year.
This current year, it's at 4% in '20, and then we have it at 4% again in '21.
Okay. So we, we just added the.
We just, we know that streets are a priority and we, and we know that we, you know, want to continue to increase our street maintenance funding every year. So even in a year where we're not increasing anything else. And this is certainly, you know, we're looking for council comment on this assumption, but we wanted to at least increase streets something because of the priority that council has placed on it previously.
So we're looking at a smaller budget, but we're still going to prioritize that and increase it.
Correct, correct.
Plus, you're intimate, you'll see where we've got a lot of street work that's going to be happening in the next year, both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the, the bond program that you all put into play.
Yeah, and that goes right into the next slide, so.
But Amy, if, if, backing up just a little bit, if we, if we, in the future, we're looking at a solid waste franchise fee, any ballparks of what that might look like?
Sure, what you'll see in most cities is it's a lot like our franchise fee with the cable or street so forth. It's percentage of gross revenue. So it would be an additional charge back to them, and then they'd probably end up billing it back to their customers. And just like on our residential customers, it's part of the rate that they pay, the franchise fee that we get from Republic.
I, I personally think it's smart to keep these off the table for this year, but then to start looking at them again.
Right, right, we're not, we're not going to be coming to you with.
You're not coming to us.
At least another year, yeah. But at the same time, we, we know that we've got to find a new funding stream for streets.
No, I think it's good to consider the options out there that might be available.
Very future potential sources.
Pursues, yeah.
Well, I'm going to go back to, to the street maintenance increase in budget, and I am the biggest cheerleader for doing that. I want to increase it, I want to spend more money, I want our streets to be done well. But I think once we, you know, this is just personally, if we get into it and we can't get the budget balanced, I think that's a place that we could look at taking it back.
I would agree, I don't like it.
It's not my first, certainly not my first option.
Sometimes you have to do what you have to do. And we have a, not, I wouldn't say a buffer, but we're spending, you know, $5 million on the bond that we issued. So we're still doing $5 million worth of street work.
Yeah.
Which we had in place already, thank goodness. And I understand that's reconstruction and other projects, but still, I mean, we're not, we're not.
Again, I don't think that's our first option, but I think it would be something that at least, and I'm sure you've already thought of all that, but that's, that's a consideration that would save us a little bit of money to help get the budget back down where it needs to be.
If and when we get back to where life is a new normal, that, that would be something at that time, then maybe to, to begin to, to definitely look at it then.
And we can say at that point, remember two years ago or a year ago when we talked about this? This, this is now a time when we can revisit it, but right now, I think you're right. We have a lot of other things to think about, but it's on the table for the future.
Yeah, that's helpful input because certainly we're getting close to that time where we got to figure out, okay, what else can we do to get this balanced, so. Mayor, do you have something?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and then this gets into the debt funding. So to Councilmember Clarkson's point, you know, there's going to be a lot of street work going on. So there will be a lot of street repair going on, and a lot of it will be the reconstruction that's paid for from the debt funding, from the debt that was issued in 2019. We're anticipating about $5 million worth of work being done in 2021. And here's a list of some streets and a map with a, a street view of, of some of the prioritized group one streets. Anything else to add on that, EA?
We're looking engineering and ready to get out there and get some work done this year.
But I think it's also important to mention that this doesn't include Lois and Hill Country Drive, I believe.
The drainage.
Uh huh. And, but those are already, those are being taken care of and, and.
Yeah, those large drainage projects at Lois and Take It Easy are part of the bond money as well. We have a little over $2 million allocated for those large drains.
Even though the name is not on here, those are still in the works and being, going forward.
Right. Okay, moving on to just a couple of other items. Just wanted to let you know because this was something that y'all were briefed about and had, had asked for previously, that we did complete a compensation study this year. It was completed before the pandemic started. We worked compared to multiple other cities in our region. And so we have those results. However, due to budget constraints, we're not looking at any salary adjustments in 2021. We do have this study and we will revisit it hopefully in 2022. But just wanted to let you know that that was completed and done. Health insurance update. So, you know, our budget is going down, but our health insurance costs are going up. So we have to go out for bid each year on health insurance. And Kim Meismer's been working very hard on this project for a while now, receiving bids, negotiating, looking at plan provisions, you know, all kinds of ways that we could potentially get that cost down. Right now, we've entered into negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas with a overall increase of 8.2% over our current rate. Blue Cross is our current provider as well. So we're looking at a plan with no plan changes as far as the benefit levels and an eight percent, 8.2% increase. Depending on what, you know, each individual employee chooses as their option, that's about a $225,000 increase in the cost. Anything else that you'd like to add? Any questions there?
I know a couple of years ago, she negotiated very, very well. So, and you were able to keep things down then, so.
Yeah, and that's an excellent point. Our rates are lower than comparable cities for sure. And we have been able, with Kim's help, to really keep those rates flat or, you know, very minimal increases for a significant period of time. So 8.2% is still an increase, but, but we were starting off at a lower.
Yes.
And you'll recall that we start the approval of the, those plans earlier than the approval of the budget. So we'll be coming to you as the, the trust fund board and then approval of the, the new plan and costs in July. So that'll come first before we actually present a budget.
Other costs that we have going up a little bit is pensions. So our pension is administered through the Texas Municipal Retirement Service. And they do an actuarial study and come back with a rate letter each year that says, you know, based on our projections of all these different assumptions, you need to contribute X percent of your payroll to the pension plan. So that has increased from 10.34 to 10.73%. About $58,000 in total, so not huge. But it is an increase that we've got to fund in a year when we're looking for decreases. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And also just reiterate that the city of Kerrville does fund our pension plan in its entirety as far as whatever TMRS says you need to contribute this percentage. The city contributes that full percentage. So some cities out there, you know, may say like, okay, well, they're telling me 10.73, but we're only gonna contribute eight percent or something like that. We don't do that. We contribute the full amount requested. And then, then they have to look at actual experience and actual investment returns and that kind of thing to determine our level of funding. Our last reported funding level was 86.9% funded, which is an excellent level. Anything over 80% is considered extremely good in the pension world. So I just wanted to let you know that we're strong there. But it is a little bit of an increase for next year. All right. So now I'm gonna direct you to the legal size paper that you have a handout of. This is a overview of our budget variances. You know, usually in this workshop, we spend a lot of time talking about expenses, but there's not nearly as much to talk about when our expenses are going down. So, so just a highlight on the revenue. Right now, our revenues are projected to be $853,000 less than what our 2020 budget was. So we've gotta find cuts for all of that. And then you'll see on the bottom part of the list that, you know, this is by department and what the current draft 21 budget is compared to the original 2020 budget. And then you'll see, you know, those decreases in multiple departments. So just to highlight a few of the things that we're doing. At this point, we've eliminated all pay adjustments in the 21 budget. So across the board, all departments, no pay adjustments. We've also looked at or factored in a continued hiring chill or delayed hiring for open positions and public safety positions would be filled, but other departments, open positions, we're looking at delaying hiring. We've also cut back significantly on travel and training. We've also cut back on IT equipment and various software expenses. Also in our 21 budget, you may remember that we have, we have a separate fund called the Asset Replacement Fund. It's kind of like a savings account for our large equipment and vehicle purchases, that kind of thing. And the way that that fund gets money is general fund transfers money over to that fund each year. And, and that way we can save up for large purchases. And if we have any extra revenues at the end of the year or something like that, we can transfer them over there. But this year for the 21 budget, we don't have any transfer to asset replacement factored in at all, zero. So that's concerning because we don't want that balance to get too low. And we still do need to purchase some things.
Maybe looking at the rosy side of it, if 21 is better than we anticipate and we have budget surplus, we can transfer it into the asset replacement.
Yes, yeah, that's an excellent point. And we have been doing that for the past few years. Once we get our final numbers at the end of the year, we come back to council and do a final year-end budget amendment. And it often includes additional transfers either to that asset replacement fund or the capital projects fund. And it is when we know, okay, we have this money.
What's the balance, balance in the asset replacement fund right now, approximately?
Let's see. We are looking at, we're looking at a balance at the end of the fiscal year of about $370,000. If nothing was transferred in, a balance by the end of 21 of $50,000. So that's getting to a very low level.
The tran, and that's, are you showing that in where it says transfer in all other? But where am I finding this?
The transfers out are in that very first expenditure line item called non-departmental.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's a little bit confusing. So transfer in, that's primarily the water funds transfer into the general fund for that street use fee. And then the water fund also pays for some administrative costs for using our IT and HR and legal department, that kind of thing financed. And so that's revenue coming in. And then the going out is in the non-departmental.
I want to go back to one, when I, in terms of not filling vacancies except for public safety. If you had a vacancy in development services, and this may be a question from Mr. McDaniel. If you had, say, a vacancy in development services or in streets from water and they, that was essential to the good operation of that department. And you couldn't shift staff to cover it. Would we then look at a replacement?
Case by case basis, and that's why we call it a chill as opposed to a freeze, a hard freeze. I've been in places where we've done a hard freeze. This is more looking at each case and seeing what the need is. So for example, right now, we're actually down two parks positions. I'm not sure that we would ever want to go less than that. So if another vacancy comes open, we probably will fill it. We've got a vacancy in the municipal court, or at least we soon will. We're not gonna fill that at all. We're gonna just eliminate it. And most all the public, in fact, all the public safety, we are filling. And then there's some, each case is just different. You know, I think there's one in streets that's, that's vacant, but I'm not sure we could do another one like that. So it's just looking at each case and see what we can afford to do and get, and not compromise service levels as much as possible.
As a council member, that's what I hear. We're not gonna be reducing our level of service. I mean, if it's a critical position, if it's apartment head, we're gonna replace that. More than likely, we're gonna find some way to take care of those and see that the city moves forward.
Right. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna say that service levels won't suffer at all. It's possible that they will, but we're gonna do our best to keep up with it all.
But we're still gonna pump water and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah.
But like those park maintenance positions, you know, might not get mowed quite as often or, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Well, the, the idea of a chill rather than freeze, I think is good. It gives you flexibility. I know you gotta be careful about that in terms of expenditure, but I think it's wise.
Yeah, thanks for the question. All right. Those are my main comments on the expenditure side. We're continuing to, you know, continuing to try to get in balance. Looking ahead, the next time we're gonna come back to you is on July 21st for another workshop similar to this. But we'll be talking about the water fund and several other of our smaller funds. And just wanted to give you a little bit of preview there. On the water fund side, we're not looking at any rate changes for 21. We're, our budget currently just leaves everything as is as far as rates. The hotel occupancy tax fund, the HOT fund, we're looking at reductions in both revenues and expenditures there. That's one that's been hit particularly hard for the last couple of months as we've had hotels completely closed, that kind of thing. The, the data that we're getting in right now, there are a lot of things coming back pretty quickly. So this is another one that'll be subject to change as we continue to get more information in. But as of right now, our, our placeholder in there is still a reduction for the year overall. Golf fund, we're looking at small rate increases there. Asset replacement fund, we've talked about. Debt service fund, we're not looking at any new debt this year, so no real changes there. We will be bringing you something in July, though, related to debt refundings. These are two debt issuances from 2012 and 2013 that are currently paid by E I C and the water fund. And we have a low interest rate environment right now. So we're looking at like a refinancing basically of these debt issuances so that we could save some on interest expense over the remaining life of the loan. But we are not programming that into the budget at this point.
Okay, we're looking at about a rate of one and a quarter percent in the refinancing. What do we think we can do?
We're looking at like about two percent as, as a potential rate. We're gonna have Ann Entrickin from Hilltop Securities come back and do a presentation for y'all in July. And she'll do multiple scenarios where she'll tell you like, you know, what the rate is right now for, you know, a similar city with a similar bond rating. And then she usually does some scenarios with what if the rates go up, you know, 15 basis points or 25 basis points. Because it is definitely a process. You have to, we'll have to get a new bond rating and we'll have to issue an official statement, that kind of thing. So, so rates can always change during that, you know, about two month time period that it takes to make everything happen. And then the TERS fund is the last one we'll talk about. Once again, this is dependent on those tax rolls. But right now, we're estimating potentially maybe 50,000 in revenue going there. Whatever the tax rate is changed to, that'll impact the amount of money that goes into that TERS fund. And that TERS increment is based on actual dollars collected compared to the dollars collected in the base year. And so the difference between the dollars collected in the two years is the amount that gets transferred over to the TERS fund.
Collected or accumulated by the end of this year or possibly the first of next year, right?
Well, this year, it's 30,000.
30,000 was what we had budgeted, maybe a little bit less than that. We have quite a few taxpayers that are on a plan where they don't pay until the end of June. So we're gonna have to see what those end of June collections are before we know the increment. But our increment was budgeted at 30,000. I think it'll be between 20 and 30,000, something like that, that gets transferred over there. We did not have any budgeted expenditures in that fund this year.
So the 50,000 would be anything that comes after that.
It would be for fiscal year 21.
Right. That's what I was.
So cumulatively, roughly $80,000. So pretty small number just because we're just getting started.
Still more than I thought it would be, so.
Yeah, that's good. On the golf fund, Amy, we have small rate increases. Would that be in the actual fee for green fees?
Yeah, both green fees and cart fees.
Cart fees, just a little bit in each.
In particular on cart fees, we are looking at, we have a multi-year lease and we are looking at renewing a lease or actually a new multi-year lease because we are looking at bringing in new fleets of better carts.
Oh, okay.
That, that fee increase will be directly correlated with that new.
Okay, okay.
But we're looking at small increases, nothing significant, but we are looking at.
I still think we're fortunate we can keep the golf course open. So I always tell people, you know, the carts are, the new carts are needed. And it's a tourist, you know, amenity and as well as a local amenity. So I'm just thrilled that we're, we can afford to keep it open. We need to remember a little increase is what we might need to do just that, so.
And certainly the increases, you know, we look at the surrounding courses and other public courses and that kind of thing before undertaking any increases to make sure that we're still competitively priced. All right, well, that's all I have. Anyone else have questions or comments?
One of the things I thought was interesting, Amy, I think you had given us sales tax and how it was, had affected nearby cities. And the surprising thing was that we had, we held better than any other city around during the March and April there. And I'm not, not exactly sure why, but it was, it's nice to know.
Makes me nervous.
Me too.
There's something wrong.
Well, and it could be some of, because we are a retail hub.
I think so. I absolutely think so.
From the Home Depots and the Lowe's and the HEB.
Somebody paid early.
Yeah, Lowe's and Home Depot and HEB were, just stayed busy.
Well, and we do also have a lot of our, our population, you know, that is retired. And if they're retired, maybe their income hasn't been impacted as much as someone who actually lost their job. So maybe that's helping us.
That percentage of people being retired, yeah.
But it was pleasant to know and.
Thank you.
A positive sign.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's comments. And also wanted to make sure y'all recognize Julie Behrens. So she's our Assistant Finance Director. She doesn't always get to be in here, especially in these socially distanced times. But she's helped a tremendous amount with putting this budget together.
Thank you.
Right. Good, good. Uh, one, one question I want to make. On the 2021 budget on, uh, on, on this, this sheet, I see that city council is down for $14,758.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that as income.
Um, yeah, well, you'll notice that there's a $31 decrease from, um, 20 to 21. Um, that city council is contributing, so we appreciate, um, y'all contributing that $31.
Maybe we can increase that a little bit, too.
All right, all right. Yeah, good, good.
Somehow the mayor thinks that's his salary. I don't know. I think we need to clarify that sometime.
Uh, I may make this observation in other settings, but, um, I want to say, given, given what we're talking about in terms of the budget, um, I want to express appreciation to a couple of folks, and there are others here in the room that I could express appreciation. But Mark McDaniel, our city manager, Mark's been in the city management business for 34 years.
Actually, he's 35 now.
35? Ah, all right.
But who's counting?
And undergraduate and, and master's work in public administration. Later, uh, work at Harvard School of Government. And he, uh, he just, and he started in public finance. So he, he knows well what we're talking about here. And from his Dozier, or education, work in the market and our work here, I just see them as being very careful in, in what they're doing and what they bring before us. And, uh, so yes, we'll question, we'll, whatever else, but, uh, they really do a good job. And they're outside people looking at this and state reporting that's going on. Um, so, trust you guys.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other word before we go? Okay. We are adjourned.